All right, so we're going to officially get started, everybody. Welcome to our organizational meeting of January 11th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to our student board member from ECLC, Kyriez Brudson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pendleton. Kyriez, would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kyriez. So while I have the gavel this evening, I'm going to start us off with just a few remarks as we're heading into this new year and bringing the organization of the board to a start. On the days when I walk around the administration building and in our schools, I'm reminded of the many women and men who came before us as members of this board and who've guided the Akron Public Schools for more than a century. Buildings and streets often bear their names. These seats should hold a weight and a humbleness. Perhaps like no other time in our history, the administrative team and staff of APS have earned their stripes. Our leadership team alone has more than 100 years of experience in education and not only knows the ins and outs of APS, but they're also well-versed in a myriad of laws, rules, and regulations, best practices of Ohio and around the country. Our teachers have shown themselves to be nimble and resilient way beyond anything they've ever been asked to do, and our staff has worked countless hours and made great sacrifices to prepare for our return to school, to continue to serve thousands and thousands of meals, often standing outside in every kind of weather. They also have safely transported students, both APS and non-APS, in accordance with state law during a very unique time. We are incredibly fortunate for their wisdom and experience. But if we don't mind that and allow it to work for our students and families, we're not doing the job we were elected to do. While we bring an incredibly diverse level of expertise, our job is not to be the content matter experts or to micromanage each decision. Our job is to bring the concerns of the community to the administration and communicate and work to make the needs of both come together in the closest match. In the time I've worked with David and his team, we've tackled some of the most complex and difficult projects and situations from Ebola to rebuilding three dozen schools, creating an entirely new model for learning in our college and career academies of Akron. We shrunk the footprint of our schools to fit our enrollment, often painfully, while saving millions of dollars for Akron taxpayers. These challenges were accomplished with cooperation and dedication. There were tough questions. There were partnerships forged in the community. There was also conflict, which wasn't always as public as it appears to be now. Technology has made it easier for the public to tune in during this time of crisis. Our communities and our families are watching. The challenges of this year are going to be daunting, but we can accomplish them together. The highest priority over all the challenges and changes is going to be getting our students back in school. The vaccine will have a chance to be rolled out to our teachers and staff. The retirement of David James will leave a large gap in our leadership team. Funding with so many of our families hurting and going hungry will be an incredible burden as we fight our way out of the pandemic and the recession that's accompanying it. That discussion is going to come on later this evening in this meeting. The board needs to be the help that our schools and administration need moving forward into this year for our families and our city. We accomplish far more together. We accomplish this by being the conduit to our families, and we do so with leadership, not just managing issues, but by relying on our experienced staff to do the work that we trust them to accomplish. I beg your indulgence for that time, and thank you very much. Our next order of business is our election, or our recognition, I'm sorry, of Board President Patrick Bravo. So unfortunately, you have to listen to me for just a little bit longer. This is a resolution of appreciation for Patrick L. Bravo, Board President in 2020. Whereas Patrick L. Bravo has completed his ninth year on the Board of Education of the Akron Public School District, serving as president during 2020. In his presidency, and despite all of the unprecedented challenges presented by COVID-19, Patrick Bravo provided steady leadership and actively represented the board and the district throughout the community. And whereas Mr. Bravo served on the Joint Board of Review, the board comprised of members from the City of Akron, the Akron School District that oversees Akron's schools, imagined Akron's $800 million building program, which now has its last construction underway with the Kemore Garfield CLC. And whereas during his presidency, Akron Public Schools' Health Care in Progress Program in partnership with Kent State University and the University of Akron, received the 2020 Inspiring Programs in STEM Award from the Insight into Diversity Magazine. And whereas during his pregnant presidency, the EverFi 2020 Champion District Seal was awarded to APS for transforming change in the interest of equity and well-being of students and meeting high standards for student wellness and whole-child education. Whereas during his presidency, the College and Career Academies of Akron Middle School Master Plan Addendum was adapted. And whereas rounding off his year as president, the district received the Porch Path International Baccalaureate Primary Use Program Authorization Announcement, which made Porch Path the sixth school in the district to attain this IB distinction. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District and the County of Summit, State of Ohio, that Section 1, Patrick L. Bravo, is recognized for his outstanding leadership and service as President of the Akron Board of Education during 2020. Section 2, the sincerest appreciation is extended to Patrick by his colleagues. Section 3, that a copy of this resolution be part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education and that a copy be presented to Mr. Bravo. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for the kind words and for the resolution. As is tradition, I just have a couple of parting remarks to share. First of all, I want to thank the board for its hard work. Lisa mentioned it. We, you know, we only had a few weeks together before the pandemic hit with full force, before the stay-at-home orders were issued and before the whole world kind of changed as we knew it. It's been a really difficult year, to say the least. Certainly the most difficult year I've experienced in my tenure on this board in almost 10 years. But I've learned, if I've learned anything from my service on this board, from being a parent, even from the students that we serve, it's that we are resilient as a board and as a district. Akron Public Schools has a long and storied history. It's been served faithfully, as Lisa said, by those that came before us and those that will come after us. Our job is to serve faithfully for the time that we're here. And we have to remember first and foremost that we're a team, team of representatives, each with value and the perspectives and the experiences that we bring and we contribute to this board. Despite the challenges of the pandemic this last year, the retirement of Dr. James and the resulting superintendent search, the potential need for new financial resources to sustain all of the progress that we've been making, I've seen my role this last year as making sure that our ever-changing tent was big enough for everyone, that everybody had a chance to speak, a chance to be heard. And I wish that I could say in the last year that we beat back the pandemic and we solved the question of who will lead this district into the future, that we solved fair school funding and that we were, you know, were finished wall-to-wall and floor-to-ceiling with college and career academies. But the truth is, we still have a lot of work to do on every single one of those fronts. We're still in the midst of a global pandemic. Our superintendent search continues. The legislature's still not passed the fair school funding plan. And sometimes it feels like we're still surviving year to year on box tops and Acme receipts. But we are making tremendous progress with our college and career academies, as you heard. And we will, and we have been, and we will continue to strengthen our partnerships in this community. And I know we'll do so together as a team, no matter how we move forward. As a personal point of privilege, as I part at least from the leadership chair at this time, I do believe that the most important decision facing this district moving forward is our return to the classroom. And I know I've said that before, and I know I've said that we have, you know, this pandemic has forced competing, in my opinion, competing equity interests or interests of equity on us, those interests of, you know, we have, we serve a vulnerable population, but also the equity issues that arise around the fact that our kids are not learning right now, not in the way that their peers or their counterparts are learning around this community, around this state, and around this country. And I don't want to see our students also continue to bear that burden because they're not back in the classroom. So I think that has to be our highest priority this year as we return to this new term above anything else. And that's my personal opinion. But I think our students don't have time anymore for half-measures or to not be in the classroom. I think we have to work to get them back. I think our parents and our community need to know that we've given the superintendent authority to get us back into the classroom and learning as quickly and as safely as possible, and that we're marching towards that date, which I hope is very soon. So thank you all again. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to say thank you. I know that I appreciate you, and I believe in this board, and I believe in Akron Public Schools.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, we're going to move into our elections. And as you know, we only do this once a year. So even Bruce and I, who've been, this will be our 12th time to do this, it's still always a daunting task. So I have asked Mr. Pendleton to jump in if I start to make any kind of tactical or Robert's Rules kind of error. So if he does that, please know that I've asked him to. And I'd like to open the nominations right now for school board presidents.
It's like Mrs. McKittrick is in the chat, if you want to recognize her.
Sorry, I hadn't opened the chat yet, Mrs. McKittrick. Go ahead.
No problem, thank you. I would like to nominate Dr. Akbar for president.
Second.
Okay, that is moved and properly seconded. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Patrick Bravo for the seat.
And I'll second that. So those are moved and properly seconded. We'll ask for any comments or questions as we move forward. Dr. Akbar and Mr. Bravo, if you'd like to make any comments, you could also do that at this time. Okay. Hearing none, we've closed our nominations. And hearing and seeing no comments, I would like to have roll call, please, Mr. Pendleton.
So we'll take them in order that we received. So not to put words in your mouth, but we do have a motion and second for Dr. Akbar for the election of president. So if you're okay with that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Pendleton.
Okay, roll call for the election of president, Dr. Akbar. Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
No.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, I'm sorry, no.
Record your vote as a no.
Thank you.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Madam President pro tem, in light of the current vote, I'll formally withdraw with much appreciation to Mr. Alexander for the nomination, but I will withdraw my nomination as president.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. Mr. Pendleton, does that suffice?
It does.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Akbar. And now we're going to move into the second nomination, which would be for the vice president. The nominations for vice president are now open. Go ahead, Ms. Autry.
I'd like to nominate Derek Hall.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Bravo?
I would like to nominate Lisa Mansfield.
Second.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, the nominations are closed. We have a nomination and a second for Dr. Hall for school board vice president. And we're going to take those in the order, and I'm sorry, we have two nominations. We're going to take those in the order in which they were received. So we have a nomination for Dr. Hall for school board president. Mr. Pendleton, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Bravo?
No.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
No.
Mrs. McKittrick? Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Pendleton, I didn't vote, just so you know.
You didn't vote?
I did not.
I called your name, I'm sorry. Mrs. Mansfield?
No.
Okay.
And motion does carry.
Motion carries.
Okay, now where are we? I apologize, everybody. So, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Hall. And did either of you have anyone come to administer your oath?
Yes. Judge David Hamilton.
Thank you. I will pass that on to you, Judge Hamilton. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate that. Judge Hamilton, can you hear me? You're muted, sir.
Just muted.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm going to unmute.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Good evening.
Okay. I'm here to administer the oath of office for president of the Akron School Board to Dr. NJ Akbar. Dr. Akbar, would you please raise your right hand? All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will perform faithfully all the duties as president of the Akron School Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? Please say, "I do."
Oh, you're muted.
I do.
Okay. Congratulations, Dr. Akbar.
Thank you.
President Akbar.
Congratulations.
And we also have a need to pause as Mrs. Mansfield has left the meeting. You know, technology has gotten the best of us.
Okay.
Judge, I'm hoping that you'll do the honors for me as well, sir.
I'd be honored to.
I didn't, I didn't think that. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Just let me know, let me know when, when.
So.
Are we wait, do we have to wait on her, or?
She's actually back, so we want to welcome Mrs. Mansfield back and turn it back over to Judge.
Sorry, that was dramatic, wasn't it? Sorry about that.
Okay. So we just finished the oath of office for Dr. Akbar, and now I'm going to administer the oath of office to Dr. Hall. So whenever you're ready, Dr. Hall, could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will perform faithfully all the duties as president, or I'm sorry, as vice president of the Akron Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and laws in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Absolutely honored to do it.
Congratulations, Doctors Hall and Akbar.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick.
Thank you very much. Is this the point where we turn it over to Patrick? Patrick, we turn it over to you for the passing of the gavel.
You know, I was wishing that we had gotten together ahead of time, just in case. And, you know, like we did the videos, so we could like pass and you could grab it. I don't have anything to pass you, but know that I'm passing you the gavel. I'm wishing you the best of luck. And I'm here, I'm in your corner, so consider it passed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bravo. Your support means a lot. So, thank you, everyone, for giving the opportunity to serve as the president this upcoming year. Before we move forward with the rest of the agenda, I wanted to make some brief remarks on a foundation for this year. And so I'll start by saying thank you to the board for your confidence in allowing me to, electing me to lead you today. I want to thank Mr. Bravo for a year of service that's been exemplary during a tumultuous and rocky time that none of us predicted prior to starting the year. Truly an honor to serve as president for this upcoming board. We have head as we move forward after arguably the most challenging year in Akron Public Schools' history. Say that we remain committed to transparency and have remained open to public participation and dialogue as we did last year. Since making it easier for the public to share their thoughts with us, regardless of how we feel, we have heard from many of you in the community on various sides, parts to the conversation for us to consider in making some of the most difficult decisions that we've faced during dual public health crises. COVID-19 and racism were two of our parallel pressing emergencies that we have intentionally and purposefully addressed in tandem. We have not always agreed on the direction, as displayed sometimes in our votes, but we have all agreed that the health and safety of our children, staff, and community members were paramount in our decisions. I'm proud of this board, and I'm proud of where we've moved this district despite the tumultuous pandemic-created road we traversed together. As a board, we are collectively the body politic. We are one of the most diverse school boards in the state. Also, this is one of the most diverse boards in APS history. This diversity is our currency. Educational attainment, race, cultural background, occupation, socioeconomic status, and areas of interest within the schools. We have all shown our diversity and thought to the promise of democracy. As individual members, we represent our constituencies and utilize our experiences and knowledge along with robust, transparent, deliberate discussions to make decisions in what has been an unprecedented time. Each member has one vote. There's no group think here. We owe it to our community to each be engaged and represent the diverse students and families that we represent. The COVID-19-related decisions, for the first time without question, have required this board to make life-or-death-level considerations. I bet none of us on the campaign trail thought we would be doing that. But we are all here and knew that none of us have been experienced with, proud of how we handled it. Staff and students, we have shown compassion and a servant's heart utilizing massive layoff tactics or furloughs during a very uncertain time as a solution for our difficult financial outlook. And our financial outlook is difficult. But we remain stable, and our community has benefited from it. In light of the attempted coup, our country and the attacks on American democracy that we've seen this past week be regarded as a beacon of hope. Democracy looks like. We are diverse in thought, and our sometimes extended meetings are perfect displays of that. We have and should always remain committed to supporting the vote of the majority of the board without becoming disagreeable. Representative democracy. When we all march in the same direction, regardless if we were on the affirming or opposing side, we are exemplifying the key and core principles of democracy. Look, this is a tough time for our country, state, city, and school district. Have made our community proud in living up to these principles. I'll discuss in more detail our three priorities for the next three years, which we have begun crafting last summer. We'll showcase our priorities of academic achievement with career academies in both high schools and middle schools as its cornerstone. The priority of equity with us addressing this menace head-on and the intentional actions for equitable outcomes for all students. And lastly, our priority of engagement, where we will engage all within the community, including all stakeholders and our staff. This is APS. And we will tackle all matters ahead of us together as one collective body. All as board members for agreeing to take on these challenges together. And for being a board that we all should be proud of and for our diversity that we hold true at every level of the district. To our staff, our superintendent, treasurer, administration, teachers, we appreciate you and are grateful for the long hours and many years of dedicated service. And we believe the staff operates the best school district in Ohio, hands down. And we trust you, and we rely on you. That binds us. And the other thing that binds us is that we all love children. This is what makes us APS proud. What makes us APS proud. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it again, this honor to serve you this year. Any questions or comments before we move on? Okay, as we move on, we're going to go ahead and go to board member assignments for 2020, 2021. A month. And so we, for our cluster assignments, for our liaisons, for Firestone and Ward Eight, we have Mrs. Mansfield. Words one, two, and five, Dr. Hall. It's Mr. Bravo. Booked awards three and four, Mrs. Autry. Word seven and nine, Mrs. McKittrick. And East and Ward 10 liaison, Mr. Alexander. Assignments are as follows. The Equity Committee, Hall, co-chair, Mr. Alexander. Members, Bravo and Akbar. Management Chair, Mr. Bravo, co-chair, Mrs. Autry, and Akbar. Legal Contracts and Board Policy, Chair, Mr. Alexander, co-chair, Mrs. McKittrick, Members, Mansfield and Akbar. See and Student Achievement, Chair, Mrs. Mansfield, Kittrick, Members- Kittrick, Members, Mrs. Autry and Dr. Akbar. OSBA Trustee. Under for his second term. Q Representative, Dr. Hall. Representative, Mrs. Mc, I'm sorry, Mrs. Mansfield. Ju- the Joint Board of Review. And our members for the Joint Board of Review will be President, Dr. Akbar, Vice President, Dr. Hall, Mr. Bravo, Mrs. Autry, and our alternate, Mrs. McKittrick. And those are our board assignments for twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Pendleton. Next, we we will entertain the establishment of board meeting dates for twenty twenty-one. Motion to approve those. And your work dots.
So move, second.
I couldn't tell who was the first.
Mrs. McKittrick, uh, motion, I believe, and Mr. Alexander second.
So, it's a property move by Mrs. McKittrick, seconded by, uh, Mr. Alexander. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield. Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to community and school reflections. You can start lining up in the chat. School reflections. We have, uh, Mrs. Autry. Oh. And anyone else? And, oh, I see Ms. Mansfield next. Mrs. Autry.
That, uh, I just wanted to quickly extend my continued thanks and appreciation, uh, to all of our teachers, our families, our students, continue to navigate, uh, teaching remotely throughout all of this. Um, I think we kind of forget that they're just chugging along every single day, doing the best that they can. And I just want to make sure that they know that they are seen and appreciated. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, that over the break TA was able to assist, uh, fifty different families with a hundred dollar gift card to Walmart. Uh, actually, in particular, it was grandparents who are raising, uh, their grandchildren, um, in our district, and this was all thanks to, uh, a grant from the Akron Community Foundation. I wanted to thank them uh, for that opportunity, uh, to help our families out. And then lastly, special thank you, uh, to our retiring football coach over at Bocte, um, Ricky Powers. Um, and not only is he a member of the only APS high school with a state championship in football, too. Um, he's also been a wonderful coach, um, and mentor to so many young people, not just men, young ladies as well, um, that he's mentored, um, in training. Um, what he has, uh, done for our young people over the many years of his leadership, um, is, is really unmatched. I just want to thank him um, for his service over all of these years in our community and mentoring young people. Thank you, Coach Powers.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Autry, uh, Dr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, I would, I would add to what Ms. Autry said about Coach Powers. Um, I know a number of us on this call are, are old enough to have remembered seeing him play high school football. Uh, and, um, the word superhero, uh, comes to mind. Um, you know, the, the stat lines and the highlights. Uh, I just remember being in awe. And even though I'm not a Bocte High School grad, I remember uh, rooting very hard for Bocte, uh, both years that they won that state championship. Um, you know, and so it was great to have Coach Powers come back and coach. And so definitely want to, want to wish him the, what, I'm sorry, definitely want to wish him the best, uh, in his future endeavors. Um, as for other, uh, reflections, um, really, it's more of a reflection. I really just want to acknowledge, um, this, the, the shooter of emails and telephone calls I've gotten in the last week or so. And I know that there's a topic on our agenda tonight to talk about this. Um, but I know, but, but a lot of emails and photos I've gotten have really centered around, um, you know, folks wanting to understand more about the vaccination rollouts and what that means as relates to returning to school. Um, you know, and so, so I know that we have some of that to talk about tonight. Um, you know, but again, um, you know, we just want folks in the community to understand that we're doing all, that this, that this group of people is doing all, everything that it can, um, you know, to get, you know, students back to school, um, you know, in, in a way that is, uh, that, that, you know, that is safe for our, 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 our staff and our, and our students. And so just want to say like, I hear you. Thank you for the, the time that you've taken to, to talk with me, whether it was on the phone or thank you the time that, you know, uh, that you took to compose your emails. Um, you know, just, just so you know, it's, it's at the front of my mind. And so hence, I wanted to use my, my time uh, in reflections to sort of share that. And thank you. Um, one special shout out to, uh, one particularly engaged, um, person would be, uh, Ms. Recuti over at King, the King School PTA President. Um, you know, it's been very uh, a, a big, huge advocate for our kids. I know she's emailed multiple folks here on the board. Um, you know, and I had a chance to talk with her a few times as well at ward meetings and on the phone and via email. So just wanted to say a special thanks to her for, uh, her continued, um, respectful engagement, um, uh, of, 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 of this body. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hall, Mrs. Mansfield.
Thank you so much. Um, I want to talk about a few events, actual in-person things and some virtual that I got to attend, um, on behalf of our district. On December sixteenth, Mrs. McKittrick and I were in a virtual event with young storytellers from the I Promise School. This was so amazing. If there's a recording of this somewhere, I would encourage board members to check it out. These were stories written um, by our students that were then acted out, um, voice acted mostly, some, some physical acting by actual Hollywood stars. It was absolutely one of the coolest things I've ever seen virtually to have words coming out of the mouths of the young man, um, the youngest kiddo from Blackish and from, uh, Grey's Anatomy stars. And I just, what an amazing opportunity for students to get to hear their words come out of the mouths of, um, famous Hollywood actors and professionals. So, big shout out for that. That same day, um, in person, Mason CLC did, um, a handing out for the holidays. It was a, some packet pickup, some things, but it was also presence from that staff and, and, um, their community and family engagement folks that are always so wonderful with, um, with getting their community in over there in the Middlebury neighborhood. And, um, Angela Harper does an amazing job. Um, one of my, uh, favorite people in this district, another one of those that if we could clone them and put them everywhere would be great. Just adore her. And then seen this one yet. This is one for the ages. Uh, for the student board meeting last week, uh, we had open tone music come in and they taught us hip hop to, um, help us deal with stress. And I don't know if you've lived until you see me and Dr. Akbar and Dr. James and and, uh, Dr. McWilliams Woods tried to do hip hop at our desks. So, I think there's a recording. I haven't had the nerve to look at it yet, but, um, uh, just what a, a great way to deal with getting some stress out and also having some fun.
Are you, i- is she just frozen on my end?
No, she's frozen.
I think, uh, if it wasn't obvious, I was laughing like crazy. So, um, thank you so much for the time for that. And also, Dreama, if we can get Kyrie's back, even if we have to double up school board members, I'm really sorry that we didn't get to hear from him tonight. So, thank you.
I definitely agree with that. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Mansfield. Any other comments?
Very quickly, if you don't mind. Um, I would just to piggyback on what Ms. Mansfield said about the hip hop lessons. Um, it was done in such a positive way and the message was about positivity that was so much negative coming at us sometimes, especially now to embrace the positive and reject the negative. So it was a fun, but really meaningful way that they got their message across. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McKittrick. And I, I'll always remember, uh, I, I've got power. Um, and those of you who are there know, um, I, I definitely appreciate that. If there's no other, uh, uh, community or school reflections, we'll move on to, uh, request to address the board. Uh, we will start with, um, uh, Russ Neal.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. First, I just want to, uh, say thank you for your service. And I think we could learn something from you all, uh, just in the way you allowed a community to have active engagement in your meeting. So I, I appreciate even being able to experience this. And I, I, I just want to call, uh, uh, say a few things as I get ready to run to city council meeting. And that is, um, I just, I believe in each one of you that are on the board. Uh, I read the article in the paper today and I was, I was a little bit disturbed. Um, and I want to let you know, we elected you to lead our school board. I know the tone of the newspaper article probably didn't mean it, but the way it came across to me and the way I know the structural and institutional practice within this city, I felt some folks were overstepping their bounds. Because i- it felt like it wanted to go back to business as usual. And folks, business as usual got us to elevate Akron report. The report that talks about all the disparity that, that exists in this city. And many of you weren't on the school board. No, matter of fact, I don't think any of you are on the school board because I think Ms. Mansfield, uh, and Mr. Alexander were coming on right at the time, but drive through our city and look at the disparity of investment in certain wards. It's something that leadership in the city has not wanted to have a conversation about. But how could we have a sixty million dollar difference in investment? When you look at the high schools that were built in East and Bocte and incomparable to the high schools and middle schools that were built in the Firestone Cluster and the Ellic Cluster. That's what happens when you don't have real discussion. Structural, no- nobody intended to do that, I'm, 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 I'm sure. But when we talk about structural and institutional practice, the outcome produces because that's just the way the system has been set. So I applaud you on taking the time to have the deep thought. I know it can be discouraging sometimes with the long meetings, but because I know the integrity of just about all of you on this board, I'm not concerned with that because I know it's out of the sincere commitment to the community. And so I just pledge my support to you all, uh, to the school system. I'm, I'm, um, uh, Akron Public School graduate, ten forty through and through, but I love this school. I love this city. And what I've, what I want to say to folks like me who are in city government or in corporate leadership, let us understand we are part of the solution, but we are also a part of the problem if we've been around for a while. Because that report was about Akron. And so all of us have to, uh, take pause and understand if we do things the way we've all, we've always done and we're going to get what we always got, and that is unacceptable. So, okay. Thank you. I pledge my support to you all. Congratulations.
Thank you, uh, Consemen Neal. Didn't want to interrupt you, but we, we want to make sure everyone, uh, same amount of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll go to Dr. Goggins. Are you there, Dr. Goggins?
I am, I am. Uh, and so again, I too want to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, uh, well, should also say that I am, uh, a proud graduate of Akron Public Schools, uh, and specifically a ten forty through and through. Uh, and so much in the same vein, I, I, uh, am encouraged by, uh, the work that you're doing and the, the, the priorities that were set particularly over this past year. And I want to encourage you, I want to impress upon the, uh, APS board to commit to use this disruption, to, to use, uh, this COVID, uh, time as an opportunity to examine and to scrutinize past practices and policies. Uh, this is in the spirit of Sankofa, if you're familiar with that concept. It is that it is no taboo to go back and fetch that once worked. Uh, this means that we, we should ask the questions necessary to identify those things that worked and bring those things forward. And to leave those things, those practices, those policies that did not work, leave them in the past. For example, those policies and, and, uh, and practices that produce disparities in equities, those should be left in the past. And we have to have the questions and ask the, do the inquiry to know what those things are. To borrow a phrase, uh, I encourage APS to build back better. Not simply a return to normal. I know that this idea of return to normal is often, uh, we, we kick around and, and there's a certain amount of, of comfort with the idea of when we get back to normal. But particularly in education and particularly, uh, when we come to issues of diversity and equity and inclusion and and disparities that we know that exist, that existed and exist, that, that return to normal, it should not be our, our goal. That's a mighty low bar. We should encourage be, have the, 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 the courage to, uh, build back better. Uh, and so with that in mind, I just wanted to recognize and acknowledge the, the racial declaration that was, that was, uh, that you did. That was a very good first step, the acknowledgement and awareness. But that needs to be followed up with inquiry and questioning into developing a plan, developing a protocol. Uh, and I would encourage you to move in those directions and, and I look forward to, uh, learning more and encouraging uh, APS and, and working with APS in developing an equity uh, protocol and a plan that, uh, is mindful of the community and, 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 uh, equitable engagement.
Thank you very much, Dr. Goggins. We appreciate your comments. Of, uh, Sarah Bolser. Are you there, uh, Sarah?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have, uh, three minutes.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak this evening and also acknowledge what a difficult time it has been the last nine months. I am so grateful for your service to ensure our children, teachers, and communities are safe in the face of a global pandemic and a plague of ignorance in our country. I requested to speak today to acknowledge that one of your own was nominated and received recognition from an organization I come here to represent. The National Association of Social Workers. Dr. NJ Akbar was selected as the winner of the Region Two Elected Official of the Year Award. Dr. Akbar was nominated for his work at Kent State University for the charge he led with Akron School Board to Name Racism as a Public Health Crisis and for his efforts to address racism within the Akron Public School. I'll read a brief excerpt from the nomination. Dr. Akbar has served Region Two with his guidance and leadership around our policy subcommittee. He has not only been a resource, but also stepped up when we had a last minute cancellation for an event, making it a success still, possibly even better than what would have happened. He serves the Portage County community as a leader at Kent State University, continually rising in the ranks, I might add. He has helped so many students have the right to an education. His impact is vast across our region. Despite not being a social worker, he embodies the spirit of social work with every action he takes. He serves all of his community and he is a leader I truly admire and hope to learn from as a social worker. Thank you for your service, Dr. Akbar. I'm honored to be here today to acknowledge your efforts and share your success with the Akron Public School Board. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bolster. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the honor. Next, we have, uh, Pastor Gregory Har- Harrison. Uh, Pastor Harrison, are you?
I am. I'm having problems hearing you, but I understand you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, Pastor.
All right. I want to congratulate the new board leadership as well as the board. Thank you for allowing me to address you. The events over the last year underscores the need for diversity, not the appearance of diversity, but actual diversity. Diversity in voice, diversity in thought, and diversity in action. And diversity is not a bad thing. I can say that I appreciate the school board and the priorities that they have set. I believe this board is getting it right. I think you're doing the right thing when it comes down to our most challenged populations and most vulnerable populations. Questions need to be asked. Past practices need to be challenged. Over the span of my life, nine African-American, predominant African-American schools have been closed in Akron. That represents more than a cluster and all on the backs of African-Americans. When you close an African-American school, you devastate an African-American neighborhood. So I think that we need to be more considerate about what's going on. The article today, I don't want to be negative, but it really hurt. It hurt because we look at diversity. There are people who don't think like you think, or talk like you talk, or walk like you walk. People who don't go along to get along are ostracized and they're labeled malcontents. To my sister Diane Autry, to brother Derek Hall, to my sister Valerie McKittrick, the president NJ Akbar, you are asking questions that we have asked for a long time. We appreciate you. We love you. We support you. We respect you, and we will be with you, no matter who it's not. We will organize a coalition with this board, not just because of you, but because of the good work the school system does. I will say to you that I will personally organize a coalition of clergy to help with the upcoming levy, understanding that it's needed. But what we won't allow is outside organizations who have their own agendas to get involved with school business. We elect you as a school board. We elected mayor to serve the mayor, to serve the city of Akron. I think it's counterproductive to encourage you to be quiet, to go along, to get along. It's counterproductive to continue business as usual. We cannot have business as usual. We will not have business as usual. A new day is here, and we must embrace the fact that a new day is here, a new time is here. So thank you to this board. Thank you to the staff of APS. I am a graduate of APS. My 14 years was the best year. Don't catch that now. My 14 years were the best years. So I'm proud to say there was only three black males that were prominent when I was in school, Dr. Clement Lee, Martin O'Chapton, Martin O'Chapton and Mr. Moore. And we loved Mr. Scruggs, but we didn't want to go see Mr. Scruggs. When I come to a board meeting, I see some powerful, beautiful, strong black brothers sitting on the side who are not only brothers, but they are in leadership positions. Now we look at a board with diversity as its leadership. That is our strength. So kudos to Akron Public Schools. We support you. Thank you for this opportunity. And I look forward to working with the leadership and the board.
Much, Pastor Harrison. Next and final request to address the board is Mr. William Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds?
Hello there. I hope you all had a great Christmas holiday season. I want to first off congratulate the new board leadership and I look forward to working with you guys in some form as a parent in this city. I just wanted to talk to you guys today about going back to school. In case you guys ever wondered what I want to talk about. I know the governor has stated that if schools commit to going back to school in person by March the first, he will prioritize the vaccines for school employees. I ask, I beg, I implore you guys to seriously consider this. I know during the last, one of the last board meetings I was part of last year, there was talk about the number of Fs in the school district. And it's frankly appalling. I'm not blaming anyone. It's kind of a reaction to the situation. I see my two kindergarten girls who are going to be getting assessed in the next week or two. And I just know my children, from what I see when they're in the virtual classroom, I know that this I beg, I implore you to seriously consider looking at this. Because this will follow the children of the school district their entire school career. Unless something happens that we can get past this. So I highly request that you consider that. And this is coming from someone who lived through COVID about two months ago. It is rough. It is a concern, and I understand everyone's concern about the health of, especially the staff. My wife and I both had it at the same time. My kids hung all over us and did not get it. I don't understand. I don't know scientifically how to explain it, but maybe, you know, the younger kids aren't as susceptible. I don't know. But please consider your next steps as far as getting these kids back in school so it does not affect their entire educational career. I thank you all for your service. I thank you all for your decisions. I do appreciate, if you disagree with your decision, that you guys stand behind your decision. I appreciate that. And I thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to this following, this upcoming year. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. We definitely appreciate your continuous engagement and willingness to come talk with us. An issue that's passionate for you, that will help your children. So thank you. Next, next, I will say all of the individuals who were invited to address the board, who request to address the board, can now migrate to our PS YouTube channel to watch the rest of the meeting. We will continue the business of at this time for participating today. So next, we have the approval of the previous meeting minutes, both the regular meeting minutes for December 14, 2020, and the special meeting minutes from December 29, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Bravo, seconded by Ms. Autry.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Pendleton. Now we move to Mr. Superintendent and your personnel recommendations.
Yes, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Thank you very much, Dr. James. Is, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Autry, seconded by Ms. McKittrick. Any discussion? Is that comments or discussion, Dr. Hall?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, looks like there's none. Sorry, I just saw your bubble blow up. All right, so there's no comments or discussion. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar? Mr. Alexander?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Autry? Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Mr. Bravo. Is there a second?
Second.
McKittrick, any discussion or comments on the just on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander? Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield? Mrs. Mansfield? You're muted. Mrs. Mansfield?
Sorry, I'm back. I was frozen. Did you call me right?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you very much, Dr. James. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been properly motioned by Ms. McKittrick, seconded by Dr. Hall. Are there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Pendleton.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo? Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick? Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. Now we move into the report. Dr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. So my plan was to talk about Remote Plus, but the issues with the state and the vaccine have changed that somewhat. So today I wanted to talk about the latest news from Columbus with Ohio Department of Health, the governor's office of Ohio Department of Education. Mr. Reynolds was right. We were provided an offer to get the vaccine for our educational staff if we commit to working with the state to start in-person learning on March 1st. They also provided some revised guidelines in terms of the social distancing practices in the classrooms, going down to three feet versus six. But in order for kids to, you know, have in-person lunch, we still have to do six feet for that. So under new business, I'll present a resolution authorizing me to sign the commitment letter and get that to the Ohio Department of Health. And let's see here. I will attempt to share my, to present what I think is a timeline that we've come up with for doing this. Can you see that? Yes. Do you need it to be larger?
Yes, please.
I can only do what I have here. So what we're talking about doing is looking at, this week we'll update our staff hub site, providing an update about this vaccination process and that return to in-person learning. We'll also send a survey to our staff because it's real important to find out if they're interested in taking the vaccine so we can pass those numbers on to Summit County Public Health. And then I'll confirm a start date and our plan for when we will want to do Remote Plus. So between now and March 1st, there's a lot of things that we have to get accomplished. And Remote Plus is one of those items that we have some definite, some definite plans for. So again, on the 18th, I need to submit the commitment form to Ohio Department of Health and ODE. I will need to send the vaccine staff survey results to Summit County Public Health so we can have a good idea of how many vaccine doses we will need because and for the COVID vaccine, you need to have two different doses. Depending on the vaccine, the current one we have available, it's, I think, four weeks apart, but there's another one that's three weeks apart. Then we'll also have to, and we're doing that, a family survey to determine, get an update on the families who want to remain 100% remote. Again, and then get all those, to get that information. And then during the week of the 25th, we'll close the family selection survey to determine who wants to stay remote and who wants to come in. Now, on the, on February 1st, and again, this is only an estimate. I haven't gotten any dates from the state on when we can expect that vaccine to get to schools or how that will get distributed. I've been in conversations with Summit County Public Health, who say they can help us get our folks vaccinated, but we're different. I would like to make sure it's easy on our staff after conferring with our union president. So I would like to see it administer in each of our school clusters for school staff at 10 North Main and potentially at our distribution center for some of our support staff, like child nutrition, some of our bus drivers, the people that work at that site, as well as our maintenance department. And so what we put down is what we think could happen is that the first dose, if we get it by the first of February, and that's just an estimate, we have to work with the state, and then four weeks later have our second dose, we hope, based on the availability. And then sometime as early as March 1st, probably it could be a couple of weeks after that is the target date for our states, our students coming in pending, you know, a successful vaccine distribution to the staff. We've also worked with, we've had conversations with our healthcare provider Palladina, with Akron Children's Hospital, because they provide our school nurses, and BeWell, who is our, they're the ones who handle our wellness plan. So in conversations with them, we're trying to see if some, one or all of them could partner with Summit County Public Health and assist them in actually providing the vaccine to our staff. Because if we had all of our staff vaccinated, that could be up to 4,000 different people, full and part-time. So those are some things that we'll be working on, and I'll keep you updated weekly with status reports on all that. But right now, I don't have any other information about when that vaccine will hit the schools or in what numbers. I was talking with the superintendent in Columbus and Dr. Dixon has like 9,500 employees. So when you think about Cincinnati, Toledo, Dayton, Youngstown, Cleveland, Canton. Cincinnati, Toledo, Dayton, Youngstown, Cleveland, Canton, um, you know, that's uh, I, I think if you add those up just in terms of staff, those are some significant numbers. Uh, we have heard that the new coming, the incoming administration plans on maybe um getting more uh of the vaccine out. So those are some things that uh we'll have to consider and uh, you know, take it from there and I'll keep you updated on that. And like I said, in the um, under new business, I have a resolution and a copy of the commitment form that needs to be submitted um asking approval to do.
Thank you very much, Dr. James. We definitely appreciate uh that report and as you've already heard from people in the, this meeting, uh, the community is anxiously awaiting uh our path for in that direction. So thank you.
Right. I know the other thing that, I'm sorry, Mr. President, um, one more issue that came up, you know, with our uh union representatives were, you know, regarding any procedures. We've already developed the safety protocol, so you all viewed those uh from Mrs. Spoke who had a video. Those are all still valid and will be used. So students will have to wear masks. We are still utilizing the sanitation procedures that you approved at a previous meeting um that um the hospitals are using. We're still doing that. Um, and like I said, the only issue is going to be the logistics of getting our kids transported, which is why we need to know who would want to stay on remote and who wants to come in. And then um another complication is just for our schools, how are we going to feed kids? Because we'll have to clear out basically, if we're gonna have kids eat in the classroom, we can have half of the students in there and the other half in the cafeteria, but we have to have that six feet of social distance between them. So those are some things that we're working through as we get the numbers in. And um, you know, both through Ohioway, through our E S C and through BASSA, um, we'll be working, you know, trying to determine um what's needed from uh the governor's office in terms of the vaccine. And then there is one other item I have in my report, and it's about our intercession. Uh, we've done this in the past and I have Larry Johnson on the call who can um talk about that because I know there were, I think, some questions that a couple of parents had about our intercession.
Uh, Dr. James, I'll go ahead and kick us off and get uh some of the basic information and then um I'll have Mr. Johnson um provide some specific examples of some of the intercession activities. So good evening, uh, board members. I'm excited to share with you um, our plan for our intercession during this remote learning environment that we have um right now. And as you know, and I think Dr. Goggins actually uh teed this up well, that this is this is the opportunity this year and has been the opportunity actually since March for us to innovate, to look at new ways of providing some of the services that we've done in the past for a number of years, but look at it differently with a new lens um and with some freedom to be able to, to explore mostly more into this whole notion of uh college and career academies and transitioning our students to enrollment, employment, um and uh enlisting potentially, those three E's that we talk about. And uh soon to be talking about that fourth, the entrepreneurship as well. So we, for our intercession, we've always had this time in our school year at the secondary level um where, especially at the high school level, where our exams, for the most part, for the past six, seven years have fallen prior to winter break. And then we would spend the first few weeks in January, always as a time where it's not the time to introduce new content because the semester exams are already over. And we would consider that this intercession time period between the first semester and the second semester where we could do interventions, we could uh try to recover credit for students struggling. And then look at doing some more innovative project-based learning that is more aligned to our portrait of a graduate. Um, and that's, so in this environment, we had an opportunity to look at that intercession a little differently to look at uh our two major priorities this year that we all have talked about and you have actually emphasized to me in our discussions. Um, the care for our students and our, their social emotional learning and looking at this more um innovative instructional approach that we have that the world of our education is, you know, wide open using this more technology-based learning. But at the same time, the social emotional needs of our students in uh in this uh learning from home mode and a more isolated way that how can we make sure that we're caring for our students' social emotional needs? How can we be innovative? And maybe free up from some of the core hardcore academics all the time. Um, and then the third piece is the concern about the uh lower grades and more Ds and Fs that we've talked about over a couple meetings. And let's look more creatively and innovatively on how to address that. So using this framework that we typically have, this intercession period between the first semester and second period, this year, we are um using four days instead of that two-week time period, we're using four days where students who are, um, and I'll have Mrs. Gija can go ahead and um cast the document so that you can see this in writing as well. So for uh four days after the first semester and before we start second semester. So the first semester is closing and then uh taking four days where we have uh two types of activities going on. So the first one is that students who have As, Bs, and Cs who have been doing very well and have been working, uh, you know, so incredibly hard during this first semester that they will be able to do innovative projects designed by the school with a choice-type format that students can take, you know, instead of just diving immediately the next day right into the next academics and new learning, taking a, a, an innovation uh time period so students can do different types of projects. Um, every school, and this is designed to be that every school has the autonomy to look at those types of projects because projects at uh Miller South may be more focused on fine arts and at Innis, they're heavily on uh social emotional needs and collaboration and relationships. They may do some different projects there. So each school really wanted to design their own projects that they could take off for those four days for students to be able to work on in a more self-directed um interest-based approach so that they could uh, you know, take off with their, with their own projects since they've demonstrated such great uh proficiency up to this point. And then on the right-hand side, the students who have uh Ds and Fs going into this end of the semester, they would get that deeper attention to really look at what they were missing um in that semester with the opportunity that they could get assignments done, recover some credit or some of the content that they missed. And then the teachers at the end of the four days can decide whether what they did during those four days, meeting with the teachers, that that can boost their uh grade or that they can get, uh, earn the credit in that course if it's a high school level course. So it's two different activities that are happening. Um, I'll go ahead and have um Mr. Johnson just share some of the examples of what they're doing in terms of the types of projects. And um I also have uh Mr. Hatcher and Mrs. Teca on the line. Mr. Black, who, who worked with the principals on all of this, was unable to be here tonight. Um, but Mr. Hatcher and Mrs. Teca can fill in if there's any other questions. Mr. Johnson?
I believe it showed that he had left the meeting.
Oh, there we go. There, we can hear you now, Mr. Johnson. Yes. Mr. Johnson? Do you want to give some of the examples of the types of projects that you're, you and the faculty designed for your students?
It looks like he's signed on twice. Maybe he, he's having the same issue I did and got booted out. Now he's signing a third. Which is what happened to me earlier.
Okay, um, can you hear me?
There we go. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, I wish you could see where I'm at with this. Just trust the dedication and commitment I have to these few minutes that I'm gonna give you. Um, uh, so really quickly, we uh, at Firestone, we, we, we've tried to design, Mr. Black gave us a, a real simple task. Make sure that we can provide intervention for students that are attaining credit. But at the same time, make sure that we're enriching students so that they're, that the students that are moving on to some kind of enlistment, enrollment um or employment have an option to con, to consider what those paths may be. So what we've done is we've created a choice board at Firestone that will allow students to select one of
Uh, Mr. Johnson, we can't hear you again.
Am I back?
Yes, you sure are. There you go. Bring her to all the way up to the choice board.
Some of our students are creating, um, are, are doing, um, uh, an A S A student is coming in to work on an original piece so she can use for audition to get into college. Uh, we have some of our students that, that are in the I V program are working on um scholarship applications. This is really the most important thing. It, this gives us time. Our counselors have set aside all four days to meet with students to go through that very difficult time of completing scholarship applications. I, I know you've talked about it at this board. I know we talked about it in the building to make sure that scholarships are available for students. Um, this is the time that counselors get a chance to meet with them. Students will be completing scholarship applications. Uh, I V students will be, will be completing uh CAS hours. They have essays that they have to complete and a myriad of things that they can do, and this opportunity gives them time to do just that. Some of our A P students will be working with their teachers on projects they need for the, to complete their A P course. All of these, all of these things happen at the same time that we're providing uh interventions to students that are trying to attain credit.
And all of the projects, the students will be, um, they need to identify what activities on the choice boards or the options that are given in terms of uh the projects. And there's accountability built in that they have to log their experiences and uh completion of their projects using Career Cruising. It's now called Zello, which is our college and career academy individual profile process that they do so that all of that gets logged in so that we can monitor completion. Some schools are having students check in during that time, depending on the projects. Um, and you know, and that is all being uh determined school by school because the projects and the innovations that they've developed are so unique uh school by school. So that is, the only other thing that I have in the document is everything is linked towards uh obviously our portrait of a graduate. Uh, you know, this is, this is the way to, and, and all of the students are in school during this time, so I want to make sure everyone understands. This is, we want more and more students to have this ability to do this uh self-directed projects. I just went to a uh, a national conference where this is really a movement, especially for secondary across the country, to be able to build those competencies on the portrait of a graduate to give students opportunities like this built into the school year to have them go do these projects on their own um to further their enrollment, enlistment, and employment. And this is for middle school and high school. So thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report, Dr. James?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We appreciate um everything that you presented and uh the information on uh, as you know, there's been many people asking about that. Are there any questions or comments from the board about what was presented? Dr. Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Um, Dr. James, I just had, uh, just one, one thing I wanted to share. And that was with regard to the vaccinations, I, I guess going back a few minutes. Um, one of the things that um uh, some companies and, and groups have seen is um, there's been issues with folks actually um agreeing to take the vaccine. Um, and so one of the things that I, I, I'd like to suggest is, um, you know, is engaging in um uh, a best practice, which is vaccine education to really sort of, you know, investing some resources in folks to come talk to staff about um the vaccine because there's a lot of miss as well as disinformation that's out there about the vaccines. So um, again, working, you know, again, as, as you know, I work in healthcare and uh, and we're seeing that there are some there've been some deleterious effects of that within, within some of our staff as well, folks refusing to get the vaccine or, or we're really wary of it. Um, it's one of the reasons why you've seen a lot of folks at Suma go on Facebook and show themselves getting the vaccine. Um, because again, you know, we're trying to encourage adoption. Um, so again, you know, it, it might be worth it, um, you know, to, to invest in, in bringing somebody in. Um, or if you've got internal resources that can kind of provide education around vaccines and the importance of it. Because again, I, I promise you um, there are people that are apprehensive about it because again, there's a lot of miss as well as disinformation about about how the vaccine was developed and things like that. So, um, so that's one thing I would suggest. And then the other thing I just wanted to share is to, to your earlier point, you know, about uh the timeline. And by the way, thank you for sharing the timeline because I know that you know, a, a lot of parents that I talked to this week were asking about a timeline and, and I, I wasn't sure if we were presenting one this week. So again, I, thanks, thanks for sharing that out. Um, you know, was, there's a big difference between getting the Pfizer vaccine, which is a twenty-one day between shots, and the Moderna, which is twenty-eight days uh between shots, you know, and I, regardless of which vaccine you get, um, you still need, I, I want to say it's approximately seven to ten days after the second dose before immunity is actually conferred. So um, so to your point, I know that the governor has under that March first deadline, but my, my, my thought, and we just want to get your comment on this. My thought was that that was more of a guideline because I don't know how you could do because everyone, even if everyone got vaccinated on Mar, on February first, if it's, if it's the Moderna vaccine, you don't have the seven days on the back end for, for immunity. So, um, anyway, so, 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 so those are my remarks. That's my question and, and uh thank you for your time in advance.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Dr. Hall, which is why we said, you know, gave a little bit more time in March because we're not sure when these are actually gonna hit and will we even have enough supply to get everyone. So um, we're gonna have to, you know, have those uh timelines be fluid and then respond as we get, you know, the vaccine in and depending on which one it is because you're absolutely right. Moderna is different from the other one.
Oh, and uh, Dr. James, I'm sorry, uh, one, one more thing. I was, I was asked to ask this question. So this is, uh, one of our teachers sent me this question to ask. Um, they were raising the issue of, of the hepatitis vaccine. That, that the question was, um, I know teachers are, uh, so, uh, I guess the question was teachers are required to get the hepatitis vaccine, but they don't appear to be required to get the COVID vaccine. And so I guess they were asking um, if, just for us, uh, uh, just a, a comment or an explanation as to why the difference. And so again, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm elevating that back to you, sir, to kind of, if you want to comment.
Yes, well, for schools, the hepatitis is different if you're, that's related to our bloodborne pathogens program. Um, but I think they might be talking about the tuberculosis piece where you know, for, and that's a state law that's required for school employees on uh, you know, getting the test um for that one is mandatory uh in order to be employed. The hepatitis B would be if you're in a job that you're, you have regular potential exposure to bloodborne pathogens or have been exposed and you have to be provided the opportunity to take that uh vaccine.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We have Ms. Mansfield followed by Mr. Alexander and Mr. Bravo.
Thank you. Mine was actually from a previous, can go ahead and ask a question also. I had a question about for time off of school for completing work in intercession. They are being told that if they complete their hours in to view the part that you discussed for the EXPAP, that they get extra days off around spring break. Is that a common practice or is that again, on a school by school basis?
That is, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. That is a approved practice from the district level. And the reason for that is that the, the individualized projects and that kind of choice board that Mr. Johnson referred to, that that's the term they're using and many of the schools they're using. We're not grading those individually because the, you know, they're so unique, so different, the types of projects. Some schools are doing fine arts kind of projects, others doing ACT prep as choices. So depending on what the students pick, there's not going to be a grade associated with that. So to be able to have the completion incentive built in to complete the project and have the students logging everything and all of their work in Career Cruising and that accountability piece. The incentive was determined by the planning team to have a day, a day up to two days around spring break if they do this completion of the project. So that's to make sure because otherwise, if there isn't some type of incentive built in when it's not graded, because it would be impossible to grade all those individual projects, that was seen as the most tangible incentive for students at this point.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alexander.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My question is for Dr. James in reference to the, the teachers. Have we, have the teachers been, has there been an assessment of the teachers to see how many of them would be willing to take the vaccine, to be vaccinated and see who would be willing to come to school and who would act to work in the building and who would not? And is there any information that you may have received from the, the union and what their thoughts are and what they're getting from their, their, their teachers?
Yeah, so we meet with the union presidents each week. And we did talk about it last Monday about that and we are sending a survey, you know, with the support of our union presidents because they understand that we really do need to get a good number to the health department. Most of the union presidents, you know, understand the need for people to get vaccinated. And I asked specifically, you know, getting back to Dr. Hall's question, you know, were, was there any pushback? For the most part, no, but there are some concerns and we absolutely, you know, will have some leaders in our district, you know, make sure we're communicating that we're getting the vaccine first. So, you know, people will feel calm. And if there are health problems, to talk with their physicians, I think that's something that's been, you know, with our teachers particularly. And I think a lot of them have taken on, you know, providing that, you know, the advice that they really need to see their medical, their medical provider to determine that. So yes, we are going to be talking to teachers and surveying them and our other staff so we can determine how many doses that we think we'll need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bravo.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for, I guess, either Dr. McWilliams Woods or the superintendent. And, you know, I'll phrase it more probably in the form of a question, I hope. And I know this pandemic has presented a lot of unique challenges. Not the least of which is how do we keep our kids engaged? How do we teach our kids in the midst of a global pandemic? But certainly for the ones that are not succeeding, we have got to be creative about how we provide those intervention and enrichment services. And it's clear, I can see that the work has gone into doing just that, that there's a focus, a real focus here on trying to lift up those students who are struggling the most with this virtual environment. What does concern me a little bit is what we tell the parents and, and the community members who have reached out to us en masse to say, you know, we, we really, we want our kids back, we need our kids back. And there's this period of time, however brief, where there's going to be, actually, if you're succeeding, you're going to have more self-directed time or you're going to be incentivized if you're doing well with additional days off. And I have a concern about that and just a question generally about how we should be responding and maybe even clarifying what that intercession period is again, because I can't see the presentation anymore. But maybe you can talk to that just a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. And I'll have Mr. Johnson hop in here too. But I think the most important thing to say right off the bat is all the students will be doing schoolwork during this four day time period between our first semester that ends on the 14th and the second semester. So all students are doing schoolwork. So no one is getting off during that time. It's just two different things. So for students who are, who have been successful in terms of earning grades, the A's, B's and C's, the students will have, and this is, this is similar to what some of our schools and STEM schools, it's actually some of the incentive kinds of things we used to do when state testing first came out back in the Ohio proficiency testing days, that if you earn certain scores on the tests, you were given days to do some more innovative projects. And some years we had days that you had off. And that was 15, 16 years ago when state testing first came out. So the, the concept is not new. What feels different is in this remote environment. So students who are having the A's, B's and C's who have demonstrated their solid proficiency and dedication this, this first semester to their schoolwork, they're able to do some self-directed projects. And really it's to push this, you know, these self-directed directed projects are, that's my vision for what we should be doing all the time throughout the semester. This isn't, you know, this is when we do want to push innovation. We want to show that students can take these projects and take off with them that further advance their portrait of a graduate competencies and their three Es, that enrollment, enlistment and and enrollment, enlistment and employment. So, so that's the focus. So the students will be doing work for those four solid days, but they get to pick it. And it's more hands-on type projects than the other students who may have worked just as hard as the students with the A's, B's and C's. They may have been just as dedicated to connecting and being a part of the schoolwork. But for whatever reason, they are having, seeing D's and F's. The students will get those four days, they'll spend the energy on recovering content that they've lost and receiving some additional support to be able to, by the end of those four days, the teachers can decide whether they've earned enough to earn credit for high school courses or to boost their grade. So everyone is doing schoolwork. Everyone is doing schoolwork. The students with the D's and F's, their incentive is they get a grade increased. The students who have the A, B and C finishing their project with that satisfaction or the satisfactory level of completion of the project they've selected, their incentive is to have a day or up to two days off around spring break time. I think we have to get past the concept of doing a project. You know, that, that perception that that's not the same as going to school or not the same level of intensity because it is. And we want to do more and more of that. Mr. Johnson, do you want to add anything?
No, I think, I think, I think that captured, I think the spirit, the spirit of intercession is to focus on learning. So that the students are advancing, as the students have advanced their academic prowess in this, in this first semester or concluding this, their academic status in this first semester, this intercession really allows them to, to focus on those next steps and really to experience what those next steps are going to be so that they can make proper decisions in whatever those next steps will be, whether it be employment, enlistment or enrollment.
And it may be, Mr. Bravo, that parents, we've done this type of intercession for a number of years where students were doing different things during that gap between after the semester ends and the, but you may not have been as aware because the kids were sitting in school that some students were going and working on their college applications or their essays. And some students going and working on, you know, a project, a robotics project and some students. But because they were, they walked into school, they were doing these different activities that you may not have seen it as much. So I think that's why it feels different, but the same concept is there this year in this remote environment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bravo. Any other comments for the superintendent? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports since this is my first meeting, there is no president to report. So we're going to move on to treasurer's report, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to hold my comments after committee reports, if it's okay with you, and facilitate the conversation around the potential for levy.
That's perfectly fine with me. Okay, so committee reports, legal contracts and board policy, Ms. Alexander.
No, no report this evening, Mr. President.
Finance and capital management, Ms. Autry, Dr. Hall?
Yes, thank you. So on the 16th, the finance committee met. So Forecast Five was recognized, or our district was recognized by Forecast Five for a project that was led by the manager of our testing and assessment, Aaron Markovic. And I just wanted to acknowledge him for receiving that recognition. I believe we also got a monetary award for that as well. But basically, the project consisted of enabling principals and administrators to better navigate the app so that they can track and reach out directly to students. So the actual CEO of the corporation reached out and acknowledged and, and recognized us. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize Aaron Markovic and the team for that project. Also legislatively, we are in a new session now. We are hoping that the Fair School Funding Plan is going to carry on with momentum and hopefully we pick back up in possibly three different ways, including being reintroduced from the House, just using the momentum that we already had. Or number two, as a companion bill from the Senate. The more likely way is that it will be included in the new budget, which is going to be due in February, where we can possibly get components of the Fair School Funding Plan embedded in that. So we're hoping to just utilize the momentum because of course, that is very important work. Thanks to our treasurer for just being heavily involved with formulating that formula. Also, House Bill 442 was amended to remove the requirements for a school treasurer and business manager to need a license and our treasurer was able to provide some testimony. And I know Ohio is unique in that we raise the standard in having that requirement of school treasurers and money managers. And then lastly, House Bill 75, Mr. Pendleton was able to provide written testimony for that. And basically positioning us so that we can be at the table when property values are being assessed and not residential properties, commercial and industrial properties. Just because of course, property taxes are 30% of our revenue. So I don't know if Mr. Pendleton has any other updates regarding that, but it's important that we're at the table when those things are taking place because it could reduce our revenue possibly. I have from the legislative portion of our meeting and I'll turn it over to Dr. Hall.
Thanks, Ms. Autry. Appreciate it. And then the, the second part of this update is really just providing some, some information regarding our meetings in that we did a district-wide financial information kind of 2020 year, year in review. You know, we discussed and you, anybody that's listening heard us, the assignments that were put forth tonight. Ms. Autry, myself, of course, volunteered to remain on a finance committee because there's just not a more fun committee and a more fun topic to be talking about than finance. And so I was still looking forward to a second year of that. And then we also talked about this, you know, this need to do some, some joint meetings in 2021. So there are initiatives, for example, college and career academies, you know, where there's a part of the story that's told in the Instructional Policy Curriculum Committee. And then there's a part of the story that's told in finance. And what we kind of really kind of discovered in 2020 is that it probably made more sense to kind of have a joint or kind of really, kind of a cross, cross committee, if you will, meeting for, for topics like that, that are really large topics for the district where we're getting, where we can kind of hear the story as well as the numbers all at the same time. So at least more informed members of the board and both committees. So we talked about doing joint meetings in 2021 with regard to certain financial topics. We also talked about the dates when resolutions would be required to be passed in order to have a main levy. So I know that there's more conversation to follow around that. We also discussed the need to create an equity dashboard by the end of the first quarter of 2021. You know, we've talked, you know, at length and a number, and a number of our meetings the last few months about, about really wanting to understand the financial aspects of equity and inequity, you know, such as trying to understand horizontal inequity and vertical inequity and sort of what that means and how that applies to our district. And so, so, so we're looking to put that dashboard together by the, you know, we set, you know, the end of first quarter of 2021 as a goal to do that. And so now with the committee, you know, adding some, you know, adding former president, Mr. Bravo, as the new chair of that committee finance in 2021, we're looking at sort of continuing on some of that work and really getting his input and support, you know, to, to, to move that work forward here in 2021. And then also, you know, the finance committee reviewed the master facilities plan and the outstanding project and certain outstanding projects moving forward as well. Mr. Pendleton, in the last meeting, also reviewed the investment policy with the, with the finance committee. And then of course, you know, here's another sort of cross pollination opportunity for us where this policy would need to be updated and shared also with the legal, legal policy contract committee as well for further review. And then last but not least, just to go off script for a minute, I just wanted, I just wanted to thank Ms. Autry for being a fantastic partner on finance in 2020. Definitely learned a lot working with you, Ms. Autry, you know, and Mr. Pendleton, thank you for your time in, 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 in teaching both of us, you know, about finance within the educational context. And so we're very much looking forward to being a part of this committee in 2021. And thank you both for your, your partnership engagement and I'm so excited to be talking more finance in 2021. So thank you, Mr. President. I'll see the floor back to you, sir.
Thank you very much. My, my computer didn't want to unmute, I guess, you know, finance is just that exciting. So thank you very much. Next committee report is instructional policy and student achievement. Ms. Mansfield and Ms. McKittrick.
We don't have a full report, but I just wanted to talk about the, the things that I had stuck my comment, comment in the chat, comment, comment. Comment, comment. Just wanted to give a huge thank you. Today we passed in, I think it was in Business Affairs, the Akron Community Foundation and the Hewlett Foundation. We've talked about it before, but we just want to thank them for our middle school and college and career, middle school transformation for college and career academies. That's what those grants were for tonight. So can't let today go past without that mention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to make special note that we have added a, a new committee, the Equity Committee, which there's no report today, but we will be having a report at future meetings from that committee. And we did assign, Dr. Hall is the chair with, along with Mr. Alexander, Mr. Bravo and myself. So those are the committee reports. Unfinished business, potential levy discussion. I believe Mr. Pendleton's leading that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll get us kicked off here. As you know, this is a continuing conversation for the board and I would say somewhat we're very well researched. Before we kick it off, special thanks to Ms. Autry and Dr. Hall for signing up for another year. We've had, we had a long year being virtual, trying to share spreadsheets over the computer and, and that's been a very difficult task. For the majority of all of our meetings have been virtual, obviously, except for the first few. So I know it's a difficult task. I do appreciate it. So I'm going to present my screen and show you the November five-year forecast as I kind of narrate a little bit and then ultimately turn it over to you for, for further conversation. And I, I get this, this goes to a testament of the district's pledge for a couple of, I would call them core values of what we believe and live. And that's the transparency around spending and dollars. Back to, back to last year, we spent a lot of time bringing in individuals to our finance committee, sharing our finances, sharing them out with the community, starting to post them online, posting reports through Forecast Five and doing a lot of work. It's really starting to gel. It will make some really big movements in 2021. But 2020, as everyone knows, in their own capacities and in their professional, personal life and in our school life, has been one of the more, more tumultuous school finance years we've ever seen. Maybe in decades long. And we pointed to, into some comments about board members about consolidating clusters and districts and buildings. Those happened over years and decades and those were millions of dollars. So put into perspective about $15 million of federal stimulus dollars coming to us within one calendar year and a lot of those dollars being required to be spent, allocated and covered and reported within that same calendar year. It kind of gives you a sense and scope about how serious a matter of finances. But really proud that this has been very transparent. So in May of 2020, if I back up and we're looking at that spreadsheet that's being projected, you remember our conversations around a $15 million deficit for the 2020-21 school year? Then COVID hit. The COVID realities of a shutdown, a business shutdown, state budget reductions and a virtual learning environment. And a virtual learning environment has definitely contributed to our finances. In a lot of cases, our finances and expenses have been reduced significantly. And we've been reporting on those, whether you see them in the public. Internally, we're bimonthly, through the board, we're monthly and more often than that. So we're reporting on these finances and I think real time. So that gets us to the November forecast. And so unfortunately, we've all had practice in Ohio in a virtual learning environment, purchasing PPE, we're now having a financial reality of not being in person. Some of the contracts, some of the purchase services that we have every year aren't realized. And so the new five-year forecast in November is resulted from that $15 million deficit to now a $2.2 million deficit. And then board members got a phone call from me last week with a new round of what I'm calling ESER 2.0 funds. And had a conversation with an Ohio Department of Education executive last week who has acknowledged, certified that the state of Ohio has received an extremely large allocation from the federal government and that those funds should be made available to districts as early as February. And albeit that Ohio Department of Education has not posted our allocation, those funds could be in upwards of $40 million to Akron Public Schools. So put in perspective that first round ESER funds, CARES Act funding CRF was about 14.5. Now 14.5 million is a little more than half used. We have about $5 million remaining in that fund that the majority of those funds will likely be used the remainder of this school year. And I worked with our budget director, Todd Atkins, today to start working on a plan for ESER 2.0 and what kind of impact that could have on district finances. That will have a positive impact on our bottom line. And if you see in the screen, you'll see the two bullet points there, the financial position of the district. What's changed? What does the cash reserve policy say? And the next bullet point, how will this impact our current year reporting is what we're digging into right now. So we have November forecast, we closed with the November books. We're just closing December and getting into January books. So we'd have another month, maybe month and a half to start looking at what budget versus actual numbers are going to look like. And then I need some time, a few weeks, to put these $40 million into the books over the next two and a half years. So these funds need to be used by September, I'm, I'm sorry, March of 2023. So they've given us a little bit more of an extension than the original ESER funds. And I think I'm, I'm giving you a sense that our current books in 2021 saying that we're going to close with a $2.2 million deficit, we may erase that. A lot of that depends on exactly when we get kids back in school, we start transportation backup, our purchase service dollars amount are going to start to pick up. And then this conversation that I know that the superintendent, assistant superintendent board are starting and having and developing this academic recovery plan could be adding more expense than what we generally see in a typical school year and also bleeding into summer programming. So we have to take that into account. But I do want to set kind of the record straight. This fiscal year, so the column that you're seeing with a $2.2 million deficit, that is likely to improve. That is likely to improve to maybe even bring true a positive number at the end. So the last point that I'll leave you with is the second bullet point under the financial position of the district to kind of tee it back up to you is what does the district's cash reserve policy say? Remember, we started this conversation right as soon as the new board got seated at the beginning of 2020 and we were looking at deficits in the $20 million range out a few years, right? We weren't even able to meet our cash reserve policy. And it's saying in fiscal 2023, so that's the 2223 school year that we have almost $34 million on the books. That's just shy of meeting our cash reserve policy. And you can imagine if we better our financial position today and what's not shown in these books is the additional $40 million, those numbers are likely to improve. Now, that has not changed Ohio's school funding formula, what we continue to bring back to our community. It has been nine years since we've asked for new money. We are going to have to be on the ballot at some time in the near future. It is not going to change our trajectory forever to not ask for new money. So I want to make sure clear that while we may push off a deficit spend this year, it likely won't last that far off in the future. And that $40 million is going to be used for academic recovery and it will be costly and it will increase what we see in a typical general fund. But it's going to take me some time to build that. So in a sense, I'm giving you what we've immediately become aware of in the past week with these ESER funds. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President, and hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. Very tale. Any questions, comments or discussion from the board? Mr. Bravo, then Mr. Alexander.
Yes, thank you. It's really good news, Ryan. Thank you for the report. And it certainly leads into the question that's on the agenda tonight, which we need to have that discussion as a board and on the possible or potential need for levy dollars still. But I'm glad that you pointed out that there is some room there and I don't know whether or not you have a recommendation on that. But you also mentioned something that I wanted to pick up on just a little bit, which we've talked about. And these funds may provide that perfect opportunity for us as we've talked about sort of the third semester, that summer semester, that ability to do some really rich academic recovery around that. So I, I would assume these dollars can be used for that. And then whether or not, you know, you have a recommendation on the levy cycle itself. Because it sounds like to me if, if we're erasing a deficit this year, if that's bleeding into next year, the next two and a half years, that certainly changes the trajectory a little bit. As you said, it's not a panacea. It's not going to put it, everything off forever. It doesn't change the project, the trajectory permanently, but there you have it.
Sure. Your two questions. Let me address the first one, first question, then I want to kick the second question, but let me tell you why. So the first question regarding the spending guidelines is we are following the same spending requirements as the first round of ESER. So we have a lot of flexibility with those funds. They most certainly, they have the words actually in the guidance and maybe even in statute. I know I have the guidance document in front of me that says academic recovery. And it is loosely construed because every district's going to be a little bit different, whether it be additional staff and resources during the school year, whether it be before or after school programming, whether it be a summer program and catch-up programs, additional software, additional transportation, additional teaching. All of it is yes. It, it qualifies, those ones qualify for that expenditure. The second question about in terms of a recommendation. So I, I think to have a comprehensive recommendation, which yes, I do want to get to, we need to make sure that the whole board has an opportunity in terms of the outline that I've got on the memo. The outline of the memo is, I just wanted to kind of read that for those who might be tuning in and for the board who doesn't have that up because I stopped sharing the screen. The first two bullet points I spoke to, so the financial position of the district, what's changed, the cash reserve policy. Those are my metrics that I live with every day and you know, we developed that, you developed that on finance committee when we first started committees, right? And then how will this current fiscal year finish up? And then I, I guess another question would be, how are we going to put to use those $40 million of funds? And what impact does that look like on the five-year forecast? But the other part about that really lends itself to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the board as a whole and community is the community support, the timing of which, fundraising efforts for it, both political, local, national, and then how much is needed to support. But I will say, kind of leading into a recommendation, I kind of leave you hang a little bit so we can get some other conversation is absolutely the finances have changed. We have some more room. It will not change the ultimate trajectory of us deficit spending in the future and the fact that we will need a levy. But in terms of what we were feeling in the board voting in November to a push to November, to May, we've got more breathing room now. We definitely have more breathing room. And maybe a good way to say it is when the majority of the board decided not to put a levy on in November, at this point, we've bought ourselves a full year, maybe a little bit more. So our finances would be like, just, maybe saying it in a more fun ways, like 2020 never happened and we could just wake up in November of 21 with the exact same financial footprint.
I think we all wish that were the case, Mr. Pendleton.
Okay.
Ms. Mansfield?
Thank you. So the way I see this is it's, it's really a time to rejoice that we have this respite, right? I mean, it's not the perfect solution. It's not forever, but it does buy us time and it buys us time when our families need it the most. It buys us time when we still have those struggling with unemployment. We still have particularly women during this pandemic who are, some of them leaving work to help care for children. And they're, you know, while they're, while they're, it, it's predominantly that if you look at the statistics, especially for unemployment rates, they're putting aside career to do that. So we've also got, as, as Mr. Bravo pointed out, the tax evaluation that just arrived in our, our mail, just a, just a top 2020 off to show us that. So I, I hope that there's a sense of a sigh of relief. I certainly feel it. And I, I hope others do as well and I'll reserve any other comments I have to see what else others say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Pendleton, as, as I was listening to what you were saying, we were saying we were going from 15 million deficit to a 2.2, then we're getting the 40 mil from the ESA funds. And then it makes me think when you, when Mr. Bravo mentioned also about, you know, where you mentioned, we were waking up and kind of we can wake up and it's like a different day, 2020 has never been there. And so in, in, listening to that and thinking about that, and we, what we have been, had real rich discussion on all of 20, majority of 2020 was in reference to a levy. And so with getting these funds, I know we talked about possibly putting a levy on in May. But getting these funds, to me, thinks that we could possibly kick it back and possibly if, if we, if the money's, the funding can get us through, through this year of 2021, we may not have to put a levy on even in November and hope that we can move into 2022. And if we need to, to put on a levy, we can do it at that point in time. And the reason I, I wanted to ask that question because Ms. Mansfield mentioned a little bit about this is that, you know, people's assessments have got their tax assessments and their monies have gone up. You know, we had COVID where people have lost jobs. People, you have people who are, have rental properties, who have tenants who haven't been able to make payments. And so therefore they sometimes rely on that money to pay for their, the property that they own. And so they're hurting. And it was, I was, I was thinking it might be a little difficult to possibly even pass a levy in May, let alone in, in, in May. And then maybe not even in, in, in November, but we would have November. So I guess the saying in a long, roundabout way and saying that, would we be able to push the levy back from this year of not having it in May and possibly not having it in November and kicking it to 2022 to, and that gives us more time to plan, get our people in the community who will support us to raise the funds and so forth so we can put this levy on and be an effective levy and a levy that hopefully will pass for, with the community.
Yeah, the quick answer to that, Mr. Alexander, is yes. The, the quick answer is yes. It does substantially change our finances. And with the same level of spending requirements, or at least the broad level of spending requirements. or at least the broad level of spending requirements, we're able to impact or lessen the expense to general fund. The, the second part of that question and comment about whether or not it actually buys us an entire another school or fiscal year remains to be seen, but it's possible. So forty million dollars, the question then becomes, does forty million dollars offset dollar-for-dollar general fund expenses that we would otherwise have? And not all of it will. Some of it will be new expenses that we've never seen before. Some of it will be the annual purchase of PPE equipment, both for students, staff, and cleaning equipment. It could mean new social distance guidelines, and all of that will be expensive, plus the academic recovery. However, we're, we're creating some room right now as we're in this virtual environment. And it would be nice to be able to answer that question with some more definitive numbers. So here's the, here's kind of the next steps. The next steps would be, let's spend the next few weeks, get through Finance Committee, reporting on how the forty million dollars would look in terms of the district's five-year forecast, and talk publicly what those assumptions are about. Does it include summer school, after school? What kind of assumptions? And that needs to be a pretty robust discussion, as you can imagine. I need some time to collect information from our colleagues and peers around the state of Ohio to see what everybody's doing too, to start kind of triangulating data, so to speak. And then get between now and May where we get a little bit more data, we start to see some students return back in person and solidify that plan in a May five-year forecast, and then properly advise the board. Hey, this may buy another entire fiscal year. But to your point, Mr. Alexander, the forty million dollars has to be used by March of 2023. So we get a little bit longer runway, but it's four times the allocation that we have received today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pendleton? Okay, as I'm hearing none, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Pendleton, for putting this together. And for the public, as well as the board, just a reminder that whenever we put a levy on the ballot, the May, the March of the following years when we realize the funds. So that also has to be factored into our decision. So thank you very much. Unfinished business, we move on to new business and move to advanced APS. Advanced APS is the three priorities that this board at our retreat this summer began crafting for three priorities for three years. It's available for all of our board members and board docs, and it showcases our priorities of academic achievement, of increasing four-year graduation rate, increasing district-wide attendance rate, and having 1% of our seniors earning at least one three-point industry credential, and establishing a financial reporting system and process to report academic return on investment. Majority of equity, which includes increasing minority business enterprises and businesses with Black Latinx and Native American majority ownership, vendor participation, groupman hiring of teachers, establishing an equity committee of the board, a financial reporting system and process for equity-related reporting, which you did hear Finance Committee report on today. Equity is develop of facilities master plan to address capital planning and maintenance to include buildings and athletic facilities that includes community input. Last but not least, our third priority is engagement. These community partnerships for the college and career academies, increase family and caregiver connections, employee resource groups, and engage and form and build support with the community for the passage of ongoing support of operating levies. So those are our priorities. We're calling advanced APS or hashtag three and three. Just comments or feedback from the board. Dr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for sort of walking us through this sort of very robust agenda for the next several years. You know, one of the things that I'd ask this board to think about is the possibility of engaging in a community roadshow with some of our partners. I know that there was, you know, at times there seems to be, you know, there's an asymmetrical distribution of information between the board and the community. And I get that folks that don't want to watch, you know, board meetings because they don't have the most scintillating material. Seinfeld reruns are much more entertaining, I'm sure. So, you know, and so, so I think one of the challenges, at least from my perspective, is, is making sure that we're able to get this document socialized with our partners in the community. So that way, there's no room for any sort of misperceptions or misconceptions about sort of who we are and what it is that, and what it is that we intend to do. I actually got a question today about this, about what our plans were. I was very quick to say that this was a document, you know, so folks who are watching, this was a document that every single board member was able to provide input into. You know, in our December 29th meeting, we talked in a lot of detail and also in previous meetings as well about this document, about what this, about what we were going to do moving forward. And so, you know, so this is a document that I think represents, you know, a unanimous board supporting. And so, so anybody that may be watching or, you know, any, you know, or folks later on, you know, they have questions. This is a document that, that all seven of us, you know, are behind and have had input into. And so I'm looking forward to working with, you know, everybody on this board to sort of see the things listed in this document come to fruition. And again, you know, it may be feasible. And again, so just want to share this with my colleagues and maybe get your thoughts and comments if there's time tonight. If not, later on, it's fine. But just thoughts around using this document as a basis for a roadshow with any, with our community partners. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll see the floor back to you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McKittrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard from our folks who wanted to address the board tonight about how we don't want to just say we're going to do something, but to, to make sure that we're taking steps to do it. And that's what advanced APS does, especially when we talk about equity. We have actionable steps in this advanced APS document that will do exactly that. And so I want our community and our community partners and everyone who has a vested interest in Akron Public Schools to know that we aren't just talking the talk, but we are walking the walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McKittrick. Mrs. Mansfield?
Thank you. I'm very proud of this moving forward. I do want to say that I want to thank those in the boards before and, and those in the administration who have worked so hard over the past several years to make part, make our strategic plan a part of every presentation. It didn't matter what, what community group you were speaking to, to what, whether it was a small class or a large auditorium, was, has always been pointed out. The plan of the superintendent and the plan of, of the board has been well documented in every presentation. They started with that with every single time. So this is building on a long history of innovation, a long history of, of doing what we say we're going to do, and a long history of trying to explain that carefully and thoughtfully to not just our partners, but our community members and, and parents and families as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments about advanced APS? Mrs. Autry? Ms. Autry?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody for their work on this and just say that I am very encouraged and excited moving forward to bring this all into fruition. So thank you, everyone, for your work on it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, hearing and seeing that, I'll make just some brief remarks about advanced APS. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Bravo for first station first, back in March or April, when the pandemic first started, we were talking about how do we all row in the same direction? And advanced APS is something that we all have, you know, pulled together on and have included the administration with metrics. And so these metrics are things that we will, as a district, be looking at in order to move forward. And so thank you for your leadership in getting us to this point. Or member and administrator who has provided feedback and been a part of that deliberative process about a strategic plan or priorities, and only having three of them, but it taking us about six months to come to a final version wasn't on accident, nor was it by mistake. It wasn't because we were delaying this. It was because we wanted to have a deliberative process so that we all feel good about where the district's headed. And so I really appreciate everyone's involvement in this process. And so with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve for the district.
Second.
All right, improperly moved by Ms. McKittrick and seconded by Ms. Autry. Jerem Pendleton, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Advanced APS, three and three are the priorities for the next three years for Akron Public Schools. To the next agenda item in new business, which is return in-person or hybrid learning. Dr. James mentioned this earlier. I wanted to kick it back to him if he has any additional feedback before any comments and questions from the board.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution just authorizes me to sign the authorization letter and submit it to the Ohio Department of Health, which would allow us to get the vaccine in exchange, in exchange for committing to in-person and/or hybrid learning, and my recommendation is for in-person learning.
Thank you very much, Dr. James. Any questions, comments? For the superintendent? Any questions about the resolution as a whole? Ms. Alexander? Then Dr. Hall?
Is this, is this vote, we're voting on to send the kids back 100% during the mayor? I'm sorry, during March or early April?
This is only the commitment letter to the Ohio Department of Health. In, in the commitment letter, which is attached to the agenda, it says in exchange, you know, if you're, you're going to get the vaccine, but you have to commit to either 100% in-person learning or a blended model. And when we get to that point, my recommendation is that we go to the 100% if we get a large number of our staff vaccinated. So this is the first step to going back to in-person learn.
Got you. Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the Dr. Hall?
Yes, so I just want to be sensitive, and I don't know if there's plans for another survey. To me, I think obviously everyone, you know, on this call has, you know, is very much excited about getting kids back to school. I do want to be sensitive, though, to the survey results that show that 40% of, you know, parents, you know, wanted their kids to be 100% remote. And so, so to me, I, you know, and this isn't anything that we have to kind of get in the weeds on tonight. Resolution is worded, it says in-person or hybrid, so I'm in support of it. But as we kind of march to that, you know, the one concern that I would have is as we contemplate, you know, 100% in-person, I want to make sure that we did some follow-up surveys to ensure that that's what the community really is looking for. Because again, and again, you know, Dr. James, I know a lot can change in the last several months. And so we may do a survey and find out that voila, you know, everyone is 100% on board with being back to school. But I just would want to allow for some space to consider, you know, a remote option if we have a, if we have a significant number of parents that still would like their kids to remain remote, you know, so that, so those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. In the report that I gave with the timelines, one of those was actually doing that survey because we do believe there will be some families who will not want their children back in school physically, and they will want to continue with remote learning. And we want to be able to give them that chance, which is why we want to get that information from them. So then that helps us staff for those who want to be in-person versus those who want remote learn.
Roger that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Mansfield, then Ms. Autry?
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to reiterate. I know a lot of you said this early or in the meeting when we were talking about hearing from people. I am so appreciative, Dr. James, of you going forward with this or asking to go forward with this and for doing some, moving us to in-person. There, the desperation that is showing up in phone calls and emails at this point has raised, has gone to a new level, and our community is really hurting. I agree with Dr. Hall. It'll be good information to inform on how many want to, to not have their children in school. We do have that ability. You know, as someone who had a student with medical issues who spent a year and a half essentially doing hybrid before hybrid was cool, we, we have that ability with APS online. We have that, we can work out other abilities, but there are so many of our students that need to be back in school. So, and so many parents that are very desperate. So thank you so much for bringing this this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Autry?
Mr. Superintendent, so the remote plus, I know at one point we were on track to get that started. Have we had any numbers at approximate in how many students that we were trying to bring back? I'm just curious about that and...
Yeah, we're, and we are still looking at that. And I know in some people's minds, the beginning of the next marking period, which I believe is January 19th, people thought that that might be the start date. But we're still having some issues with the number of volunteers that we need, you know, to come in. So I want to just focus on first and try to phase that in later in the month if possible and target February 1st and work with some of our special needs students first that our teachers have identified or are identifying. And then possibly look at some of our earliest learners, particularly kindergarten, who are struggling, and then go from there. I'm not, you know, I know, I had a meeting with staff on earlier today and late last week, and we're still working through the numbers of students that they feel we can handle with the number of volunteer teachers that we have. But I do want to caution, you know, that many of those teachers may not be the regular teacher of that child, and that's going to be an issue with some parents. But right now, because at this point, with getting volunteers and substitutes, we'll just try to do the best that we can and try to get it started as early as season.
So the way that remote plus currently stands would qualify for this commitment that we're voting on as a hybrid plan?
Right, no, this is actually separate from remote. Right. No, this is actually separate from remote plus. Because in remote, we had no, there was no vaccine part involved. It was just taking substitutes and volunteer teachers who would work, you know, periodically with some of our students who are struggling. And we were trying to target who we're going to start with. And I think our special needs population will be the first tier priority, and then trying to go to some of our primary grades, you know, just to kind of get them acclimated, you know, because our special needs population, they don't do well with change. So transitioning them, you know, from this remote thing back to a in-person school is going to take some time.
Okay. And then just to play devil's advocate, I'm just curious, what are possible repercussions if we make this commitment and then we're not ready?
Well, that's why in my report, I, you know, I, I kind of hedge my bet a little bit and want to have some flexibility. So we put from March 1st to March 22nd, because there are a lot of things that are outside of our control. And number one is getting an adequate number of vaccines and making sure that people are comfortable taking it because we really do want to have the majority of our staff vaccinated. And that is something that, you know, we will be working out, encouraging, working with the union presidents to do that. My only other issue is transportation, you know, with 20,000 kids, even if 10,000 of them decided to come back in person, five days a week or 15,000. I know Mr. Anzexler and Mrs. Spoke have to work on establishing those routes. And then again, feeding those kids and still being able to, to, you know, pass out meals for those who aren't going to be in person, and then trying to work through. So there are some logistical things that we have to, you know, that we have to work through. But they're already thinking of some ideas and working through a lot of that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Dr. James. Any final comments before we entertain a motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Very, uh, has been properly moved by Mr. Bravo and seconded by Mrs. McKittrick to authorize superintendent to commit to sign a return to in-person learning? I'm sorry, Mr. Pendleton, please with the roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo? Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. That concludes the new, new business for the board. We do have a need to recess into executive session, and a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 for the purposes of considering the appointment of a public employee or official of the school district.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Hall and seconded by Mr. Alexander. Mr. Pendleton with the roll call. You are on mute.
I am on mute. Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? Thank you.
Thank you very much. As everyone begins to log off and go into executive session, please make sure you log off completely, everyone. We are going to go into executive session and will return as soon as we can. Okay. So good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the regular meeting of the Akron Board of Education for the January 11, 2021 meeting. We have just returned from executive session, and there's no additional items on the agenda. I did want to note to the board members that do have formative assessments, evaluations for superintendent and the treasurer that I will be sending out information to on for our next steps for that. And we'll also talk about some other items that we need to consider here as well. At that, at this point, are there any other comments or information that needs to come before this board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to the chair.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Appreciate it. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.